proposes only a $11.65 per year increase for new Brunswick residents. That's less than $1 a year, so I know we're all very proud to announce we once again have prioritized the local resident spending. And in this budget, we have funding for 27 new positions with 20 of those positions being either teachers or paraprofessionals to support our bilingual and special education programs. The budget also has funds in there to continue to replace HVAC systems, in particular McKinley and New One Roosevelt School, and approve the playgrounds and fields across the district. At the March 15th meeting, I went through all the instructional priorities that the budget is looking to focus on. Well, those are, most importantly, meeting the students' instructional needs and increasing our summer school and after-school programs, providing social emotional support for students, enhancing our special education in bilingual and ESL programs, increasing our mental health services for students. We will continue our Chromebook replacement plan for students. Again, we have any new teaching positions based on student enrollments, investing in additional smartboards for classrooms, and increased funding for any instructional support positions or for supplies and materials. In addition to our general fund budget, I'll bring you to the next page, which is our ARP-ESR funding, where we have two more years to spend our ESR funding that we received from the federal government due to the pandemic. This, in particular, this funding has, I think it's about $800,000 for professional development for staff over the next two years. We'll be spending that money also on increased after-school and summer school programs. Some will be used for transportation costs that are rising to fuel costs and other rising costs. One-on-one tutoring program is something that we initiated during the pandemic where students can go on and get one-on-one tutoring at the homework helpline. We're also seeing increased costs and expansion of related services for students and increased program and supplies for our bilingual students. And of course, we'll also be using some of the federal funding for mental health supports and those two prevention HVAC systems at McKinley and Roosevelt will be using federal funding for. I will bring everyone's attention now to the 2022-23 breakdown of budgeted costs. So this is a breakdown of the general fund budget without any grants. So that budget, our general fund without any grant funding, is $232,312,000. Of that, $159 million change is spent on salaries and benefits of staff. So that's about 69% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits. About 3.3% of our budget goes to charter schools. As you can see, we have $3.8 million for gas, electric, water, sewer throughout the district. We only spend about $1.9 million in general administration. Transportation, we budgeted $9.6 million. Added district tuition for students that go to added district schools, that's $15.7 million. To maintain our schools and plan, we spend about $11 million every year to maintain the schools. And as you see, we spend $10 million on supplies, materials, professional development. We have the tech at high school costs of $4.3 million. After-school programs, $2.2 million. And then, of course, there's some other expenses of $2.4 million. And last but certainly not least is being able to budget $4.2 million in capital projects. So that gives you an idea of where the $232 million is being spent in the general fund budget. The next page is the increase and decrease from last year to this year. And again, this increase is $14.3 million, and that's just the general fund. So when I said it earlier that the whole budget was up $11 million, that's because we do have about a $2.5 million decrease in federal grants. Most of our increase out of $14.3 million is for salaries and benefits. $12 million, right? That 8.25% is the increase over last year's number in salaries and benefits, not of the total of the $14 million. And so, as you can see, out of that also, $582,000 immediately is going to charter schools. And then another majority is to the maintenance of school and plan and added district tuitions. So many of our costs in our budget are really fixed costs that are, go up year over year to continue the services that we currently have. The following page, few pages, are the advertised revenues. These are generated right from the budget, so I apologize for the Christmas of it, but this is how it printed from the State Department of Education. And I won't go through every one of these line items. And for everyone's information, I will note that the user-friendly budget will be on the website tomorrow for the public and everyone to see. And I'll conclude by bringing to the last page, which is the tax impact sheet, which shows that the average home valued at $261,910 pays about $2653, which would be an increase of $11.65 for the average homeowner in New Brunswick. And I'll take any questions from the board first.
Are there any que-- thank you, Rich, for that presentation. Very thorough. Packing any questions from the board? I'll start one person. I noticed the general administration went down, actually, right?
Yes, we did. We did reduce expenses in general administration. There is an admin cost limit in the state of New Jersey, and that limit, so you're often going to see that year over year now because you can't spend any more in general administration on a per pupil basis from one year to the next.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Rich, any additional money that we get into COVID? That money is, uh, there is a certain element that's not through the general fund.
Correct. And that's laid out how we're going to spend that money in that ARP-ESR funding tab. Yeah, so that money is separate. We're being monitored. We got to report that out separate. We track it separate. And that's used to really provide extra services to students over the next two years. We've planned it out.
So, Rich, what are the, you know, we're in the midst of gas prices going up, a war or a pandemic, you know, the impact of that on our budget. This is an amazing budget here that we're dealing with.
So I'm hoping that many of our bus routes will actually be renewed at a 2% increase, but if not, that is definitely going to be a factor that we're going to have to contend with in terms of prices. Last year, prices were already higher. We have our normal bus routes, who probably cost about $40,000 to $50,000 a year. This year, we have 12 bus routes that are over $100,000 a year.
Wow.
Right? So we've already seen a lot of those prices increase already, and we expect to see that again.
Wow. That's something that the public should be aware of, because we're dealing with, this is just crazy. So what we're dealing with. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Are there any questions from the public? On the budget? Hearing none?
Hi, everybody. My name is Linda Stork, both Park Boulevard.
Could you turn off the mic, huh?
I don't know. Is there a non-button with the mic? Didn't change. Can you hear me? No. You don't really want to hear my, can you? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I had a couple of questions about this. I'm trying to--
Turn off the-- Could you turn off the mic? Thank you.
Okay. I'm trying to see how, we have an $11.3 million increase above this year's budget, but we got $13.7 million increase in state aid. So I'm trying to figure out how we still have an increase in the property. I'm not complaining about the extra $11. I'll be paying for our schools, but I'm just trying to see how that works.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
So the reason why I recommend a small $500,000 tax dollar amount increase in this small increase is because when we receive state aid from the state of New Jersey, they also determine what they feel the local fair share through the funding formula, the local fair share for New Brunswick taxpayers. What New Brunswick taxpayers are paying is $8 million below that local fair share. And if, I have seen districts where if you don't continue to raise the taxes at all, the state of New Jersey can come in and mandate that the board raise their taxes. I saw them do it in a neighboring district, 8% a year for five years straight. So the reason why we're proposing this very small tax increase is so that we can keep pace with that minimum local tax levy and the local fair share that the state determines on our behalf. And it also is a prerequisite on getting state aid.
Okay. And would it count towards that if we got more taxes from developers that come in and do projects? Or would they still want to see homeowners paying what that--
Well, I don't, I don't know how that factors into that. All I know is that they determine through the funding formula by the state of New Jersey what the Board of Education's local fair share should be. And we are looking to keep pace with that local fair share because if you get too far behind, then they can mandate that you raise the taxes triple the amount of money that you would want to raise the taxes on a yearly basis.
Right. So I would hope that we could not have to do that all from homeowners, increasing on homeowners. Maybe we could increase what we get from developers coming in, because I feel like New Brunswick is very attractive now. We don't have to give such generous deals. And, uh, and just to head off that kind of, I think, because I've heard people from other towns say it, you know, we get so much state aid and we don't pay as much in taxes as they do, so that might be a way to offset too. I was also wanting to ask, so transportation counts in for the E-S-A, E-S-S-E-R, ARP, the COVID funding? That could be transportation?
Yes.
Correct? But the transportation did it, in fact, change due to COVID? Or are we basically transporting the same students we were before?
No, we're transporting all our students that require transportation.
Right, so we didn't change anything from COVID? I mean, there aren't half as many students on a bus?
No, but the question is, in order to use federal funding from the ARP grant, you can use funding to continue the continuity of the operations. So if you're facing increased costs in certain areas, we would charge all a certain amount, the bulk, 95% of it, to our general fund. And then if we get hit with $1 million in extra costs due to rising fuel costs or whatever it may be, we're allowed to charge those costs to the federal grant. So you're allowed to charge things for the operation and continuity of the district. Not everything you charge to the federal grant has to be brand new.
Okay.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
Great. An increase in costs and expansion of related services for students, what is that in reference to, related to, to relation tutoring with the previous ones?
That's, that's related to OT, PT, speech.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Linda. So, Rich, interpreted, so New Brunswick taxpayers are relative basis are paying less for the school district than other municipalities? Is that, is that correct?
Oh, through our funding formula, if you see, we get about $180 million in state aid. So I believe the taxpayers, being a former avid school district, pay the least amount of local taxes as compared to all the other districts. As you know, they group them A, B, C, D, F, G until whatever. So the majority of our budget is funded by state aid, correct?
So I think that's important for folks to understand, that the taxes that we pay in the city are significantly less than anywhere else. And so that's, that's important as we're talking about that. So, thank you very much, Rich. So Resolutions A to B on the 2022-2023 budget, is there a motion to accept the resolutions? Is there a second? Roll call, please. Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number six, the minutes of the February 15, 2022 monthly board meeting and the March 15 preliminary budget meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept both of them?
Both of them.
Is there a second? Does anyone object to doing them together? No? Hearing that? Roll call, please. Ms. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item number seven, superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. For the month of March, we have enrolled 9,780 students. For February, we had one case of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our student suspension for the month of February was at 95. Our staff attendance was at 94%. Our student attendance at 91%. We had 26 positive cases, COVID cases, for students and 17 positive COVID cases for employees. Earlier this month, our high school principals informed our class of 2022 and their families that this year's graduation ceremony will be held at the Jersey Mike's Arena on the Rutgers Livingston Campus, formerly known as the RAC. During this ceremony, we'll be honoring the graduates from New Brunswick High School, the Adult Learning Center, and the Health and Science Technology High School in one culminating ceremony. We are very much looking forward to the celebration of our graduates, and the ceremony will take place on Friday, June 24th. Also this month, in partnership with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, we held presentations for both parents and students. The session for parents of students in grades 6 through 12 was held in person on Thursday, March 10th. The session focused on educating parents about the internet safety and the dangers of certain apps that can be used to exploit and victimize children. The session for students was held on Friday, the following day, Friday, March 11th, and had a similar focus. Approximately 300 high school students were able to attend in person in this auditorium, while the rest of our students in grades 6 through 12 had access to join the presentation from their schools in their classroom via live stream. In regards to COVID-19 testing, we are continuing our efforts to make COVID-19 testing available to all students and staff on Mondays and Fridays. On Monday, on March 12th, through our continued partnership with the New Jersey Blackwood Physician Association, who has done a phenomenal job with us the past few months, we were able to host another successful vaccine clinic at Red Shore School, where we had 78 first dose, second dose, and boosters were provided to students, parents, and staff. We have another vaccination clinic taking place this Saturday, April 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Red Shore School. And to sign up, I would ask anyone who would like to receive additional vaccinations, please visit our district website, and we will be accepting walk-ins. Also, the district will host its third virtual job fair on Saturday, April 23rd, for all district positions. Again, all district positions. Please visit any one of the district social, our district's social media platforms, whether it's Twitter, Facebook, our website, for more information. This month, we've been engaged in an annual celebration of Women's History Month. It's an observation that represents a significant instructional opportunity and one our entire school district has taken full advantage of, from pre-K through high school. Of course, whatever individual gender identities may be, the history made by women is really the history of everyone. We shared one world and perhaps the most essential lesson of Women's History Month is that each of us, whoever and wherever we are, have been profoundly influenced by the uncountable contributions women made and continue to make to the narrative of humankind. While here in New Brunswick, public schools, we have been imparting this profoundly important perspective to our students, and I encourage the entire school community to also spend time considering how women have shaped our community, our country, and our world. It's an awareness to be embraced and cherished. And lastly, this month, we would also like to celebrate and recognize our school's social workers, who dedicate their lives to serving others, and that job is one of our crucial positions in the district. And I have to acknowledge the extraordinary work they have done for the past two months. And I can't tell you specifically what that is, but I can only tell you I can understand the weight. And I, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to acknowledge their contributions and highlight the tremendous role they play in the lives of our students, in the lives of our administrators, in the lives of our educators, in the lives of our parents and community. I want to just thank them for their services. That concludes my report.
Is there a motion accepted? Superintendent's report? Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, the student representative report. Ms. Ashley Caldwell.
Good evening. I will be, I will be presenting the student representative report. Multiple meetings took place during the month of March to help increase parent and teacher involvement within the PTO. On February 28th, the marking period two honor roll ceremony took place during the school day to celebrate our students' academic achievement. On March 11th, thousands of students, including those in other buildings across the district, took part in the Better Safe Than Sorry presentation that focused on only online safety and understanding social media. On March 25th, under the guidance of our visual arts educators, students in New Brunswick High School exhibited artwork for a day of understanding by working introspectively and reflecting on the board definition of hate to identify social justice issues that don't make the headlines. This concludes the student representative report. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Move on to item number nine, the Facilities Committee report. Mr. Edward Spencer, chairperson.
Yes, Mr. President. Good evening. Facility Committee, a met early part of this month. Blanquita B. Valente Community School Project. We have received comments back from New Jersey Department of Community Affairs on the final construction documents, which were, which were submitted last month. The mechanical and electrical drawings have been approved. Our architect has responded to the DCA's review, comments on the plumbing and architectural drawings. The final educational approval was received from the Department of Education on August 18th, 2021. As of October 19th, NJDCA, building review approvals were released for structural steel and underslab plumbing work, fire protection, site and civil, footings and foundations, and the grease trap. The elevator plan review release was received on August 16th, 2021, and partial electrical underground plan review was received on September 7th, 2021. Treatment works approval, August 11th, 2021. Order main extension permit approval was on August 20th, 2021. Storm water management plan review, conditional approval, August 20th, 2021. Delaware Raritan Canal Commission approval, September 15th, 2021. Full site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval, September 20th, 2021. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed. The underground tanks have been removed, the holes have been properly filled, and the job trails have been delivered to the site. Temporary electrical utilities have been connected. Site demolitions, clearings, and evacuation of both detention basins have been completed. Grading and building pad work is complete. Underground storm work, water work is in the final stages of completion. Atlantic Engineering continues with their onsite inspection and testing services for concrete and soil. Continued progress is being made on concrete footings and foundations. Concrete footings and foundations work is scheduled to continue for the next two weeks, few weeks, excuse me, a few weeks in addition to site utilities, underslab utilities and the on, on the on-grade slab. Structural steel is in fabrication and is scheduled to be onsite in April. The construction progress remains on schedule for completion date of August of 2023. We have spent $7.1 million toward construction date. Additionally, the school district is using the construction project as an opportunity to educate, inspire our students in the fields of architect, engineering, and construction. Our administration and teaching staff, in collaboration with our construction team, has designed a series of field trips and hands-on meetings for the fifth grade students of Lincoln Addit and the P-Tech Engineering students. We started the field trips to the school site last week. The goal for Lincoln Addit's fifth grade student is to provide a general overview of the design and construction process while allowing them to see their school building evolve from a bare site to a completed building, concluding with their first day of classes. For the P-Tech students, we will be, we will be taking, we will be taking, we will take it further, integrating what they see on the field trips into the projects and studies during the year. That, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Thank you, Mr. Spencer, for the report. Things are progressing nicely in the school, so that's, that's wonderful. Moving on to item number 10, the Athletic Committee report. Ms. Patricia Varela, chairperson.
Good evening. The winter season ended the first week of March, and there are several athletes that earned honors in recognition. Curly Berber finished second in the state tournament for girls at heavyweight. She placed in the top three all four years of her high school career and finished fourth in the state all-time wins for girls, including one state title. Josiah Brown earned all-white division honors for basketball. Jan LaLascle, Josh Masari, Tajay Herrenet, Henderson, and Antonio Domínguez earned all-white division for indoor track. Josh Fennis placed in the county for shot put and second place with partner Reta Elarosi in the county relays for shot put. As we have begun the spring season, we are still keeping student safety a priority. Even though our numbers around the state are decreasing, athletes are still testing every week to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus. With all sports underway for the spring season, we have had over 300 students at the high school and over 100 students at the middle school sign up for spring sports. Opening day for the spring season will be this Friday, April 1st. With softball traveling to Danana and tennis playing at Perth and Boyd, our baseball team will host East Brunswick Gold Tag, and volleyball will host Perth and Boyd. Boyd's Golf will also face off against Perth and Boyd at Rarito Landing Golf Course. We have had several athletes selected to participate in All-Star Games for their respective sports. Josiah Brown in basketball, in basketball, which will play tonight. The new Merissa Rose Bowl, formerly known as the Snapple Bowl, will be on July 7th. Brian Garcia, Reta Elarosi, Kiefer Golds will all play defense, and Amir Alford will play running back for the offense. We also have four senior cheerleaders selected to participate. Yamara McFarlane, Leiana Dover, Kiara Smith, and Sanai-- Yamara McFarlane, Leiana Dover, Kiara Smith, and Sanai Burgus. Also, if you're interested in seeing all sports game schedules, you can visit the Greater Middlesex Conference.org and click on any browser tab, and you will have the schedule for the middle school or for the high school. This concludes the report for the Athletic Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. A lot of exciting things happening. Item number 11, the Curriculum Policy Committee Report, Ms. Andrew L. Seward.
Reconciliation.
Reconciliation.
Is there reconciliation?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, it's February 2022.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to accept the reconciliation report? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful. We'll move now to item number 11, Ms. Seawood.
The Curriculum and Policy Committee met last week. We started off by reviewing various newsletters that the Curriculum and Instruction Department provides. We looked at the technology news. The district celebrated Digital Learning Day, February 22nd. This is led by All for Ed. It's an initiative to engage students and empower educators through the effective use of digital tools. The second newsletter we looked at, Google Meets Update, Live Translated Captions. Google introduced live captions as an update to Google Meet, which allows meeting participants to now change English meetings into Spanish, French, German, and Portuguese with translated This makes the calls more inclusive and collaborative while eliminating the language Verizon reviewed the Verizon Innovative Learning Lab Grant material. New Brunswick Middle School and McKinley School were awarded innovative learning labs that are powered by Verizon and Heart of America. A space in these schools will be transformed into a custom-designed experiential learning space powered by next-gen emerging technology-infused curriculum and Verizon 5G. Students are going to be given an opportunity to use new technology and harness the skills they need to build for the future. Other items in district news we reviewed, Read Across America Day. The entire school district participated in a celebration. This was on March 2nd, which is an annual event. Whether it was in-person, virtual, or combination of both, reading was celebrated by all across the district from parent, district staff, community members, and alumni. We want to highlight the Day of Understanding activities. March 25th, New Brunswick Public Schools expanded the message from our community across all grades and schools through the celebration of a Day of Understanding. Through our partnership with Windows of Understanding, students were empowered to become active contributors to our community and global society by presenting art exhibitions centered around climate change, economic justice, public health, and from protests to policy. Through the use of visual language, student artists communicated methods of understanding in powerful ways that cut across cultural boundaries with the intentions to motivate their audience to think critically and find deeper meaning in the work. On the conflict, the current conflict with Ukraine and Russia, the Humanities Department curated curricular resources to help our teachers use instructional time to enhance students' understanding of this tragic issue. The conflict between Ukraine and Russia in order to make sense and connect their learning to what they are currently seeing and witnessing on the news and social media platforms, as well as what this will mean for them, for us, in the near future. We received a report on parent-university activities. On February 22nd, the Mathematics Department presented their parent-friendly curriculum with a focus on discovering strategies used in number talks to build fluency by encouraging participants to think about the numbers, shapes, or algebraic expressions, and rely on what they know about structure, patterns, and properties of operations to mentally solve problems. Introducing the first-in-math online platform to encourage parental engagement, as well as promote self-awareness, perseverance, growth, and improve attitudes via digital math games. On March 17th, the Family and Community Engagement Coordinator and her team of liaisons presented Navigating the School System, which provided valuable information and guidance to parents of the many benefits that New Brunswick Public Schools has to offer. The session highlighted multiple channels of communication, multitude-tiered system of supports, who and where to address specific parent concerns, and the purpose of board meetings. The presentation served as a reinforcement to families and staff on what can be expected from the team and the importance of uniting efforts for the overall success of our students. And during the meeting, we did discuss that hopefully we can have this information available at all locations at the beginning of the next school year, as well as on our district website. We reviewed all resolutions that were referred and recommend approval. Then we reviewed all policies and regulations. Most of the, I think there's, I don't think we had any new policies. Most of these were revisions to existing policies, and the revisions were made at the request of some board members. Also, in reviewing policies, many of them needed the language revised to stay current with the times. Do I need to tell you which policies we reviewed? They're listed.
That's the different ones.
Okay. They have been, copies have been provided to you, and we recommend that they be approved. And that concludes my report.
Ms. Seawood, your report, as always, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Item number 12, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Report. The commission continues to grow and now continues to be at record enrollment, helping special needs students through in all 21 counties in the state of New Jersey. And New Brunswick has taken advantage of this program saving taxpayer spend, literally tens of millions of dollars because of a less expensive but better program. With that, we'll open up to item 14, the Public Comments. Rich, I know there are two people who signed up.
Yes, first we had Mr. Charles Lee Cradville.
Mr. Cradville here, I don't see him.
I am right here, sir.
He's there, I can see him, hidden in the shadows.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradville, from New Brunswick, here in New Brunswick today. Apologize I was unable to attend the budget meeting. I know I hadn't signed up to speak. I'm sure it broke all of your hearts that I was not here, but we'll find a way to soldier on. I asked a question at the last meeting, I did attend your last regular meeting, are students using the pool at the Wellness Center? And the answer I received was that you'll get back to me. Unfortunately, no one got back to me, so I'm back, and I'd like to know, are students using the pool at the Wellness Center?
Good evening. They are currently not allowing us to use the pool based on COVID regulations, but we did reach out to them.
Okay. And who was that that you reached out to?
I could provide you with that name. I don't have it on me now, but I could definitely provide you with the information.
Okay. And your name?
My name is Virginia Helm.
Hi, nice to meet you. I, yeah, I'm concerned because, of course, this DEFCO is the one who built the Wellness Center, and they, you know, promised to give us a little thrum with that project, was that they let the students use the pool. Everything else was, you know, not for the community, except they said they'd let some students use the pool, and now apparently the powers that be are not. I'm not aware of any COVID-19 regulation that prevents people from using pools. In fact, I'm pretty familiar with the subject and believe that there's no good reason that the students can't be using the pool, and I hope that you'll push for DEFCO to honor their commitment to let the students use the pool. I did catch in Mr. Spencer's report that $7.1 million is spent so far on the Blanquita Valente School. Pleased to get that information, have been hoping to get that for some time. But my other question still stands of what happens if the $55 million that is set aside for this runs out? I hope it doesn't happen, I hope it doesn't come to that, but we should still be prepared to know what happens if the $55 million runs out, who is on the hook to fund the remainder of the project?
So first of all, I will say that the project is unscheduled and on time, and on budget as it stands right now. And so we anticipate that it will remain on budget and, you know, and will finish on time. The cost of the building, you know, there are all sorts of things other than just the building itself that impact the cost of the building, and so, you know, we'll keep the public informed as we're going through this process.
Okay. I just know there's a lot of uncertainty, and, you know, costs could go up, and I just want to make sure we're not all on the hook for finishing the project since DEFCO and Robert Woods should be. I just asked about the violence, was there another violent incident Friday, March 25th, at New Brunswick High School, and what is the board doing about all these problems at the high school?
I wouldn't say all these problems at the high school.
We did have altercation and fight at the high school, and it was dealt with following our discipline guidelines, and that's the answer to the question. We have been actively working with our students, not only here in the high school, in all the schools, as with all of the other school districts, and not trying to compare New Brunswick to other school districts. There has been an end uptake, and my personal belief, and this is my personal belief, is the lack of isolation over the past two years has created a lot of anxiety. What we're trying to do in a school district is to create a culture where students feel comfortable to learn, feel comfortable to build a culture of understanding amongst themselves, create more school activities in addition to the academics, that we know through those means, better relationships will be formed, response to agreements and disagreements, hopefully will resolve easier, but we do know that we are navigating some tough times, and I assure everyone that we will get better at it.
Thank you for the thorough answer, Dr. Helm.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. And I would add, I actually am doing work in Florida, Ohio, New York, and New Jersey with other school districts, and the same, exactly what Dr. Johnson said, that the pandemic resulted, there's much more unrest, there's much more agitation, and there's a lack of maturity that is plaguing this country, so that the social-emotional impacts are very, very significant.
But Dr. Caldwell, I think it's so important that we do have a conversation about this. I was just talking with my team. I mean, we are seeing this across in all different segments, whether it's courtrooms, whether it's boardrooms, whether it's on airplanes, you know, and I do feel it's important to note that our students continue to look up to the adults. And, you know, we started to see a lot of this behavior also from the previous president, where it's just, I don't know the word, lack of decorum, and my concern, and what our team is talking about, is how we start to, you know, reverse this trend, and we all saw what happened, those of us who watched the news, what happened at the Oscars the other night. So it seems right now that we're all off tilter, but in order to get back to that, we really have to have some real purposeful conversations, but understand that our kids are watching and our kids are learning. So that's not to take away anything that we in New Brunswick need to do better, and we need to be a leader, and that's my expectation in leading, I'm not going to say change, reverting it back to what we know best.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. So Linda Storbe is next?
Yes, Linda Storbe.
Good evening again. I have several questions here, but first off, on related issues, while we were just discussing 95 suspensions again, could you tell me how many of those are in-school suspensions and how many are out-of-school?
I could get that for you.
Okay. And also, I'm interested in what type of intervention is done? I was assured that when children are suspended out of school, they get some type of intensive help, because just turning loose for a few days isn't, it means it helps the atmosphere of the school, I'm sure, but I don't know how it helps that person. So I would be interested in that also. These policies that were revised, and you said copies were provided, they're not attached here, where would they be provided? So we could see the revisions of, for example, conduct of board meeting?
Are they on the website?
Yes, on our district website.
On our district website. On the district website.
The revised policies, the revised policies are on the website?
Yes.
Okay, good. And I had a question about the, this pilot, the SCUDA for the counselors. I don't come unfamiliar with the program and I don't have background in counseling, but I would.
Could you talk about which resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution M. But I hope it's just not more work for the already overworked counselors.
M. M. is it Mary?
M., yes. Pilot collaboration with SCUDA for the school counselors to apparently have to input a lot of data and do different things. I think they're already spread too thin with the number of children that they have to see. So I would want to see them have to do any more work than necessary, especially until this said that we're not able to hire more counselors to make up that difference. I had another question about this. So all of these contracts and all these consultants, these all say 21 to 22 school year. Like another $50,000 for this consultant to the child study team, another $50,000 for that. They just seem like really high numbers. Is this really for the rest of this school year, which is almost over?
Yes, I mean, this is, this is, as it says in here, this is, you know, really to supplement what we have in educating our students.
For the rest of this year?
Yes.
So all these consultants, like at the rate that they get paid an hour, like the one that P. the pediatrician neurologist is just going to see 80 kids before the end of the year?
So remember, this relates to exactly what we were just talking about, the social-emotional well-being of young people that we have to invest in that development to make up for some of the challenges that have happened last year. So this is an investment of the district in the well-being of the students. It helps the teachers, supports the teachers. So, you know, so it's, it's an investment in our district.
I'm not questioning the necessity for the service. Is that logistically possible for a pediatric neurologist to see 80 children before the end of the year?
It's not only possible, it's essential.
Yeah, because there's a number of different consultants like that, that between now and the end of the year, 15,000, 50,000, 30,000.
Remember, we're a 10,000 student district, so, you know, that's. Ms. Storff, thank you so much. We're in time now. Thank you so much for your questions. Mr. General, is there anyone else who signed up?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll go to the President's Report. The one thing I, I don't normally recommend Netflix shows, but there's an educational show on, on this guy Vladimir Zelensky. There's a show called Servant of the People. And so he starred in the show, the most, the most respected man right now in the world, starred in this comedy about a teacher, a publishable teacher, who, who is ranting and raving about politicians and is caught on video and the students make him run for president and becomes president of the Ukraine. And he talks about that. So if you watch, it's called Servant of the People on Netflix. Couple things. One, it's, it's, you know, art is imitating life. Life is imitating art. This guy now who's leading Ukraine in their, in their fight against the Russians, their, their fairly successful fight, is starring in this comedy. Then out of the blue runs and then wins 73% of the vote and is now one of the most respected people in the world. So when we think of our young people, when we think of stuff, there is hope. This world allows people to be whoever they want to be if they're trying to do the right thing. So I think we as adults need to make sure that our, our, our young people, that all people know that there is potential. As we're dealing with a lot of the negatives in society, there is potential for people to dictate and guide their future. So, so check that out. A lot of people, they talk to him, well, this comedian, they say comedian, and I didn't really, but then I was watching Netflix and I saw this show and I'm watching this show. And it's very, very instructive about corruption and government and other things. And so Servant of the People, very educational, very real. And frankly, my own comment is, I think, I think Tooten saw this show and figured this guy was an actor and he was going to run away from Ukraine. And instead he dug in and he's, he's leaving the country in a, in a, in a very, very, very successful way. So that is my report. We'll now move to item number 15, the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Dornau.
Yep.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Ms. Sevilla. So noted. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number 16, the Finance Committee Report. Ms. Diana Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. The Finance Committee was.
Dr. Caldwell. Dr. Caldwell.
What did I say?
Dr. Johnson.
I feel it on my mind. Dr. Caldwell, the Finance Committee did have an opportunity to review the Finance Report and we'd like to have it approved as presented.
Is there a motion to accept the Finance? Is there a second? Okay, roll call. Mr. General.
So noted. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes, I'm staying on page 37.
So noted. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, I'm staying on page 7.
So noted. Ms. Varela. Ms. Sevilla. Page 26, noted for the record. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number 17, the Resolution for Closed Session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4 to 6, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore being resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff. In the minutes of said closed session, discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Is there a motion for closed session? Second, roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Dornau.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
All right.